We are on TV?
Yep.
We are now.
Mr. Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Obviously, he is not Mayor Alexander Noramai, Mr. Doug Smith. They are otherwise detained, but will be here shortly. So we're going to get going with our agenda. We have a few guests with us this evening. Mr. Riddick, you had asked about a Coach's Corner. We have a pop-up this evening from Mr. James Mickle from Recreation Parks and Open Space to kind of flesh out what you had talked about and maybe give you some understanding of what we're doing. And then by way of guests, we have Colonel Kinsman with us from the Army Corps. He'll be introduced by Ms. Christine Morris. We have Dr. Chip Fowler from Old Dominion. He's with us, and Jared Chalk will be introducing him. And then Ms. Christine Morris, we're in final design in Chesterfield Heights, so that's exciting. So she's going to show us what that looks like. And then we'll conclude with Mr. George Holman, our Planning Director, about where we are with impending planning commission meetings. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Mickle if there are no other questions or points from the council. Okay, with you, Mr. Vice Mayor, do I ask Mr. Mickle come up?
Let's roll.
All right.
So I understand that Ms. Graves is also with the mayor.
Yes, excuse me, yep. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Chief Deputy Bender. I'm excited. I'm always excited when I have the opportunity to come forward and relay information about some of the great programs that we're offering over in Recreation Parks and Open Space. Three years ago, we were asked to pilot an outreach program. Outreach program to impact the Berkeley and Huntersville communities. Three years later, that program is a state award winner. We've doubled our participation from year one to year three, added three locations, and also added several incentives and programs throughout the Norfolk Nighthawks. I believe that the Coach's Corner has the same potential to impact our communities. What is the Coach's Corner? And I echo Councilman Riddick from last week. He spoke very elegantly about the Coach's Corner. The Coach's Corner will be a partnership between our POS and local coaches, past and present, to impact the lives of our young people, to increase moral compass, and also increase the desire to be productive, responsible, and caring citizens. Logistically, we would like to start on April 6th, the first Saturday of each month, offering programming. We will start at the Boxing Center, the Norfolk Boxing Fitness Center, the Huntersville Center and Lakewood Park. And we'll start program at 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock PM, offer six sessions concluding in September for six months. Transportation will be provided by Recreation Parks and Open Space. Staff and our pickup and drop-off locations at our recreation and community centers. Who? Who's the Coach's Corner for? Our pre-teen and teenage participants between the ages of 11 and 16. And initially, we will target our South Side, Berkeley, Huntersville, Norview, and Park Place. But we'll utilize our subject matter experts over at Human Services and our Recreation Centers and our Athletics Department to help us recruit. Short-term and long-term goals. We utilized the 40 developmental assets to come up with a few short-term goals. And the three that will have the most impact will be knowledge, awareness, and attitude to increase the knowledge of awareness of importance of education, specific subject matters, and that would be whatever the expertise of the coaches are, places and activities outside their neighborhoods, interact with people outside of your neighborhoods, own desire to explore and learn, and desire to graduate from high school and plan for their future. A few long-term goals and things that we'd like to see are increasing behavior and skills, emotional intelligence in particular, possible improvement in school, increasing moral compass, provide guidance to younger community members, take the information back and share it with your little brother and sister, next-door neighbors. And last but not least, mentor mentee relationships with coaches and facilitators. That is all that I have.
Let me say a couple things. Johnny, there's a friend of mine that I swam with in the morning. His name is Caesar. He lives in East Beach, and he's interested in doing what we're trying to do, you know, in downtown, out in your neighborhood. And he told me to tell you to send this information to, I think it's the East Beach Civic League.
East Ocean View Civic League.
Yeah, East Ocean Civic League. And also, does East Beach have a Homones Association?
It do, yeah.
Yeah. And he has a group of men that's willing to, you know, to work because this issue is not just confined to, you know, it's not geographically confined to one particular part of Norfolk. We have so many youngsters who are challenged. And character is the biggest thing we're dealing with. And I'm going to get Caesar's name tomorrow. You're going to love this guy. You know, he's...
I have an email from him from something else.
You know who I'm talking about? You know him?
Mrs. Sweeney, could I contact Rodney Rose? Will you be getting in contact with him?
Uh, no, different, but, I mean, the Business Association probably want to get involved as well.
Yeah. And Sandra Sawyer over at Lake Taylor is interested. Larry Steppner, former coach at Booker T.
He was Michael.
And Ms. Doyle is interested in getting these youngsters to run.
It's on my calendar.
And so we have, you know, what we need to get it done. So it's just a matter of everybody rolling their sleeves up. And what did you say you were going to do?
I'd like to, I'm not the athletic one, but I'd like to, you know, do things like mock interviews, talk about bringing chess in there, leadership, class, all of those lines. I mean, I guess that's my question. This could certainly evolve and flex to include other things as well.
Sure, sure. Yeah. The last thing, and, you know, we know that our youngsters Monday through Friday, that we know they're reading, writing and arithmetic, but character is what we're missing. And this is what we have to recreate citywide, our youngsters.
I'd like to just add on to that, you know, we underwrite a couple of 5Ks in Norfolk where we do a little bit of gifting with police services. I know it's not, it's more for the nonprofits, but there's opportunities then to get some of these kids to sign up for some of those 5Ks and maybe cash in on some of those partnerships that we have. And Courtney can prepare them all for the 5Ks. Martin will be there with them.
There we go. I'll tag you.
I'll be there cheering you guys on.
I think one of, I just had a question in terms of data. You know, we want to, if we're going to do it, we want to be effective and efficient and make sure that we're measuring what the outcomes are. So do we have a plan in place for how we do that? I mean, I...
We utilize the same template that we utilize for the Nighthawk program, and that's why we're starting off initially with the six sessions, so we can evaluate the program and ensure that we're putting ourselves in a position to succeed in helping these young people.
Is this in our budget, or we have, where is this?
Recreation Parks and Open Space is covering the cost of this program. Right now, we had estimated $5,000 for the six sessions. And a lot of that is personnel and staffing.
You'll probably find some partnerships.
Yeah. How are we going to get the information to the youngsters?
We're going to partner with Recreation Centers, Athletics Associations, and as I relate in the services.
One of the things that I thought of is, and you could help us with this, let's just say, for instance, we got some of the youngsters who maybe live along the light rail station. And if you give us some, you know, free passes, they can, you know, catch a light rail and end up right down here by the health department and meet Courtney. Because so many people don't know about that Elizabeth River Trail, you know? And I think this is something that I really want to see the youngsters on one side of town to come up and be a part of the Elizabeth River Trail. And that doesn't cost them money. It's just, you know, walking and learning.
Absolutely.
HRT offers a Freedom Pass for kids 17 and younger, and they can ride all of HRT for free. So we could maybe outreach out to HRT, so we could do to help them partner with them too.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Mr. Mayor? Did suit change?
Where's my change? Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Hi, Mr. Bender.
We were eager for your arrival and thankful for Mr. our Vice Mayor. As Ms. Morris comes up, if that's okay with you, Mayor, she's going to introduce Colonel Kinsman. I thought you might want to share, last week you were in DC at the Corps itself, and they had mentioned that in your putting on this case, if you will, that the current sitting person is an engineer by trade or by profession, and that you were there at least two hours, and there was a bit of relief in the room when you were finally finished because he put you through your specs. So that was a great story that we'll share with the mayor and myself over at DC. Ms. Morris?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Chief Deputy City Manager. It's my honor to introduce Colonel Kinsman, who will provide you with an update on the Norfolk Coastal Risk Management Study. Colonel Patrick Kinsman assumed duty as the 59th Commander of the Norfolk District, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, on June 13th, 2018. As the commander, he oversees the district's Civil Works, Military Construction, Regulatory and Emergency Operations Mission, and is responsible for more than 350 employees in Norfolk and in resident offices throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. So welcome, Colonel Kinsman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, very honored to be here. Again, as Christine said, 59th Commander. I did take over in early June. My family moved about three weeks later, and we're getting settled, I would say, still after, again, multiple military moves. But honored to be here and going to provide you a brief update. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't provide just a brief program update as well, so that you have a broader perspective on, you know, all the work that the Corps of Engineer District is doing. And so if I could ask you to go to the, sorry, that's me, next slide. And for the members of the council, you have that placemat in front of you. So this briefly discusses our overall program. It's what we talked about with the members of Congress in Washington DC several weeks ago. And so just in terms of a brief overview, bring your attention kind of the upper left, which talks about revolution. And that's our Chief of Engineers, Lieutenant General Todd Semenite, who chose that word deliberately. And it's about not doing business as usual. It's about revolutionizing our project delivery process and remaining a world-class organization. We're committed to delivering that program. And the chain of command, the commanders above me are empowering, you know, me and expecting me to cut through red tape to get to even faster delivery. Right below the revolution, you see some numbers. We're 385 strong, only six military in that whole group, but our professional Department of the Army civilians are the continuity of our program. Our program this year is about $425 million, of which about $300 million goes directly to small business. And lastly, in the lower left, our regulatory program, 4,700 actions, a trained, very well-trained group of regulators that goes through our process. And of those 4,700, I'd say five or so are controversial and reach my level. The remainder of the chart, if you look across the top, is broken down into National Economy, National Defense, and National Heritage. Under National Economy, we're working closely with the Port of Virginia on Norfolk Harbor navigation improvements. And we're very proud of the flood risk reduction for the Gathright Dam way out in the western part of Virginia. Of course, later on, I'll cover the Norfolk Coastal Storm Risk Management. But the question for the Commonwealth, as you see, for the members of the council listed there, is kind of what's next in the Commonwealth? Where are priorities for studies? And under National Defense, again, closely, we're working throughout the Commonwealth, and I'll cover a few details later. Our Emergency Operations Wheel of Misfortune, that's the colored wheel, in 2018, where over 52 different events, 2,200 predominantly civilian Corps of Engineer employees stopped what they were doing, their day job, and deployed along the Gulf Coast, Puerto Rico, Texas Coast, and provided emergency response. And, you know, it's one of the most different aspects of the Corps, where, again, serving as the Federal Emergency Management Agency's engineer of record, are just enormously proud of the teammates that deploy and support other civilians during a time of need, or citizens, I should say. Under our National Heritage, we're continuing to work with other organizations and agencies that focus on the Chesapeake Bay. We're starting work this year on a major environmental restoration project in the Lynnhaven Inlet, and we're engaging our federally recognized and newly recognized tribes. I won't go into details, some of our budget numbers are on the reverse, but there's one number I'd like to leave you with, it's $35 million. That's the value approximately of the salaries for the Corps of Engineer employees here that are working in downtown Norfolk. So down and dirty very quick, and I will push forward just with a few more things. So just where we are operating across the Commonwealth, our Civil Works projects in blue, our military construction at, you know, Army and Air Force bases and others across the Commonwealth in green, our regulatory program with field offices in yellow, and finally Cities of Norfolk and Richmond highlighted in red. Snapshot of our program, again, military, in terms of Army and Air Force. The IIES is our Interagency International and Environmental Services, primarily that's inter-agency. So we'll work on a reimbursable basis for NASA, National Park Service, NOAA, and others. And Civil Works, like here on Craney Island or Gathright Dam, or the work that we're doing in the Norfolk Harbor. And finally, maybe a little-known, you know, idea, but DODIA, the Department of Defense Education Activity. So for any of our military schools that are worldwide, if there's design or, you know, restoration, modernization efforts, then that design effort goes through the Norfolk District here. So listen, I'm already biased. I inherited a fantastic team in June, still learning a heck of a lot in terms of our program, but honored to lead that great team. The team is not only addressing the challenges here within the Commonwealth or the Chesapeake Bay, but we're actually able to export some of our study capability. So our planning team, led by Ms. Susan Connor, who's here with me today, is leading three studies down in South Florida. We're also participating in leading an Anchorage study in the Port of New York, New Jersey. And it's really testament to the really high-quality work that Susan and her team does. And so, so really, my main goal now, and I'll just shift to that, is to update you on the Norfolk Coastal Storm Risk Management Study. And first and foremost, really, as Mr. Bender alluded to earlier, I think congratulations are due across the board, the entire team, with what we have as a signed chief's report, signed by Lieutenant General Semenite. Many studies never make it to this point. Some may not be economically justified. There may not be a federally, a federal interest determined in the particular project, or the environmental compliance hurdles sometimes overwhelm the process, but we made it together. City of Norfolk, Norfolk District, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and I really want to take just a few moments and recognize the tremendous work done by the city staff and the leadership both prior to and during our study to get us to this point. Your financial commitment to investigations prior to our USA study allowed us to do more with the limited funding that we do get. And your proactive approach to resiliency within the city is true example for other cities, I think, across the nation, and includes those commitments, which are, I think, a perfect complement to the recommendations that we make in this study. The financial and policy investments on your part certainly allowed this study to successfully navigate the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer processes, and it resulted in a recommendation for a project with a cost of $1.4 billion. I know that the council has been briefed previously, but I wanted to briefly review the project highlights with the reminder that with a feasibility study, we're really at the 10% design phase, and really what the next phase in big picture is a more thorough design effort. So the project consists generally of structural and non-structural measures, and there are four separate structural systems that consist of a combination of some or all of the following: floodwalls, storm surge barriers, pump and power stations, earthen levees, oyster reefs, tide gates, and a living shoreline. The four separable structure systems are located, and I think we can, Susan will help there, but, so to Pretty Lake to the north, to Lafayette River to the west, and to both the downtown area and Broad Creek to the south. Non-structural measures include actions like home elevations and acquisitions, dry floodproofing, basement fills, and a combination of these same elements. And the five non-structural areas focused in the Norfolk study are Willoughby Spit, Mainstem, Ingleside, Elizabeth Park, and Campustella and Berkeley. We're grateful that the city is willing to take the lead, per the Corps of Engineers policy, on the real estate transactions that will need to occur for the construction of the project. The study was accomplished within the three-year, $3 million timeline, which is the goal for all of our large studies, but is sometimes not accomplished, and almost never on a project of this particular size. So there's a huge accomplishment, and again, very thankful for the partnership with the city. That being said, there's more work to be done, and I don't want to, again, hurt your head or whatever, but I'm showing you the 17-step U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Civil Works Process. The star depicted on the slide is where we are. With just having a chief's report signed, we're, that report now has been submitted to the administration for review. That goes up to the Office of Management and Budget and the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works, which has approximately four months to review that process, or review the report. And after that, the report is officially transmitted to Congress, where it will await project authorization, which normally occurs in a Water Resources Development Act. That next WERDA, or Water Resource Development Act, is expected sometime in 2020. And hopefully, Congress will deliver those kind of on a regular basis every two years as the, has been the kind of the recent schedule. As those steps are occurring, the district is working with the city on a design agreement, so that we can begin what is called PED, or PED, Preconstruction Engineering and Design. 400,000 in federal funds has been appropriated to begin PED during this fiscal year, and the Norfolk District staff is working closely with Christine and her team to coordinate the design agreement and really define the first increment of work. Where should we focus that design effort? In fact, I think we've got a meeting scheduled for next week to kind of get into the details. Obviously, this is a very large project. We'll need to define kind of what are the manageable segments to design and later construct. On average, the PED or design phase in large Corps of Engineer projects such as this takes about two to three years. And for both the design and the construction stages, the work is cost shared between the federal government and the non-federal sponsor, with 65% being the federal cost and 35% being the non-federal or City of Norfolk cost. And so in order to begin that construction, Congress will obviously need to appropriate construction funds. And once that occurs, we'll have to execute what's called a project partnership agreement, which is a formal document of how we move forward and build a project. So one question you're probably asking is, how long will it take to construct the project? Certainly, that is dependent on multiple factors, including federal appropriations, real estate permitting, as well as the support of the local sponsor for funding and project advocacy. It's important to keep in mind that I believe the end goal here is to reduce risk to the residents and business of Norfolk through the delivery of a constructed project. And so we're absolutely tied in together, and again, appreciate the partnership. Although there's a lot involved, again, making great progress, and I thank you for your commitment to getting this done, and I look forward to any questions that you have for myself, the team. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Colonel, and thank you for your continued partnership with the City of Norfolk. Having a signed chief of engineers report is a huge milestone for the city and for the region. We have met with the senior White House staff, as well as our entire congressional delegation, and we requested this project to be authorized for construction. We also requested additional $5 million in the 2020 work plan to continue to move this project forward. This project will reduce risk to major economic assets here in the city and the region, but more importantly, as you noted, Colonel, to the people who call Norfolk and this region home. We look forward to a continued relationship and partnership with the Army Corps as we embark upon this generational infrastructure projects here in the city and the region. Again, thank you, Colonel. Others? Andrea?
So 35% non-federal funding. So you said $1.4 billion for the entire project, structural and non-structural. So let's say it's a, we were lucky and we got one portion of it at $300 million. 35% of that is a large chunk of change that the city and their state are going to have to come up with. How are we talking about or planning for that? And what's the timeframe? The earliest we could see that, I mean, the latest, it could be 10, 20 years, whatever the next natural disaster is. But what are we doing along those lines?
Well, just last week, the mayor was in DC. Like I said, we met with the Army Corps, and our last meeting before coming here was with OMB. And it was to that exact point of, how do you look at this? Because as a, in the aggregate, $1.4 billion is a lot of money, so you start to look at it in phasing. And so it's going to be conversations like what you just explained with the state and our partners about how do you get to that 35% match? I mean, by context, the last Army Corps project that extended Ocean View by 30 feet, that was first positioned in 1980. And so I hope that's not the context or the precedent that we want here at all, but it is going to be going to the state and doing what we've been doing, which is this knocking on doors and reminding of just how important this is for us.
And that came as a result of Hurricane Sandy, yes?
Exactly.
Because we tend to, as a federal government, pay for things after disasters as opposed to in advance, but we're changing that direction a little bit. Is that correct?
So ma'am, I guess the City of Norfolk and the leaders certainly, as the mayor was discussing, certainly get an opportunity to influence, and I'm, you just can, well, I won't, and you need to be careful of whether I advocate personally for the project, but it's great to see the partnership that we do have and know that that partnership is being leveraged, you know, kind of at the national levels to bring needed attention and funds to the project. To, as Mr. Bender was discussing, I think that focusing first, what's in the near term, it's focusing our design effort on where we think the most vulnerable parts of the city are, and that certainly is something that I think the City of Norfolk has a lead on. And we want to be working on where are the most vulnerable areas, and, you know, so the, through Christine and her team, that the council can certainly prioritize, and we'll follow your lead to the...
That was the next question. So the feasibility study, the 2018 feasibility study versus the chief's report, the way the projects were listed, the order changed, and I don't know if that order changed because the priorities changed, or it was just how they got blitted out. Do you understand, I mean, so could you talk about that? Has there been a prioritization change, or what you're saying is...
I'm not sure I can prioritize change. I defer to Susan or Christine to, yeah, yeah.
The implementation sequencing, where we said like which areas we're going to go first?
Right.
So we continue to coordinate that. I don't remember if something switched in there. Right now, I think it's downtown and then Pretty Lake. I'm not sure what's up with that. Those are the first two, but all of that, none of that is set in stone. So implementation, we can continue to work with the city and whatever portions that we agree on are most important to implement, we can still, like, that's not a piece that's set in stone. That was a recommended sequencing.
Okay. But did it change between the chief? Okay.
I didn't think it changed, actually.
I saw something from Ann Phillips today. I don't, I, my understanding is, yeah.
That's great. And then my last quick question was, we would love to have this federal money and do these huge projects, but we don't know when and if that's going to come. Of course, with the mayor's great help, sooner rather than later. However, if we were to undertake some of the, some elements of these projects in advance ourselves, does that somehow negatively affect or negate the opportunity to do something in the future?
No, ma'am. We'd have to, you know, continue to stay partnered in terms of if the city wants to, you know, pay some of the cost upfront, then it's important to get some of the, you know, get, ensure that there's federal cost share credit, and all that would be, you know, kind of laid out in a design agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Chalk comes to the podium to welcome our guest from ODU, I see that Ms. Graves is here, and welcome Ms. Graves this evening. And I see also Mr. Smith, so I'm going to transition.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, the city has a goal of fostering entrepreneurship and business development. And, you know, of those things, developing talent, supporting talent, retaining talent, and attracting talent are key to success in Norfolk. And partnerships with local universities also key. The Norfolk State Innovation Center opens next week, and as part of that, they're going to be bringing joint programming opportunities with Norfolk State. So this is an opportunity with Old Dominion. So I'm going to introduce Dr. Chip Fowler. I want to thank him for all of his hard work in bringing this project to fruition. I want to thank Tara Saunders for all her work at the foundation, and Tom McGrady and Clancy and Thays for all his work helping this, make this program happen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, City Manager Smith. Feel like I've seen a lot of y'all today, but it's good. It is, it is, it is a good partnership. We were very... Uh, we, we're very happy to be here. I'm happy to present on, uh, this idea and on this project. As many of you know, because I think most of you attended President Broderick's State of the University address, uh, last August, uh, the university made some structural changes, uh, last year in order to really fully embrace our role as, as an anchor partner in economic development and, and entrepreneurship in the region. Uh, to that end, uh, the president announced the creation of a new position on campus, the Associate Vice President for Entrepreneurship and Economic Development. Uh, it was my honor to be named as the first one of those. Uh, I, um, I'm very happy to serve in that position. I've been in it for about a year now, and I'm still in it, so that's a good sign, obviously. Uh, the other announcement he made on that same day was, we were consolidating a lot of our efforts in entrepreneurship and economic development under one umbrella, uh, that umbrella being the Institute for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. Uh, the goal, then, that the president set out, President Broderick set out to me, was because of the very externally oriented, um, activities that we were doing, he felt it was necessary to get all of those various components off campus and out into, uh, the region. Um, and so, with the help of many of the folks on the city staff, uh, and, and others, many of you around that, the table here, um, we are delighted to, to discuss the opportunity to perhaps move this institute into, uh, downtown Norfolk. So what is the institute? Uh, it was created by the president in 2018, last year. Uh, we see it as playing a key role in the entrepreneurial ecosystem. In many ways, we are what we like to refer to as the top of the funnel. Uh, so, uh, we are, we tend to be the very early, early-stage vetter for, uh, some crazy ideas on napkins, frankly, that, that might walk through our door. Um, but the good news about that is that's what we're built for. Um, you know, we have a number of staff, we have a number of faculty, and we have a number of researchers that can help vet those ideas. And then we see it as sort of our job to kind of vet those ideas, give them, uh, some assistance and nurturing, and then move them along. Uh, as the ecosystem in Hampton Roads has thickened up, particularly here in, in Norfolk, that's made our job a lot easier. We can take these things from the cradle and move them along to perhaps, uh, fourth or fifth grade, to use the analogy, and, and then pass them on to the appropriate folks. We are, uh, trying very hard to, to reverse the region's brain drain, which has come up, uh, not only here in the city of Norfolk, but has been mentioned in a number of the cities around Hampton Roads. Uh, part of that is by making this simply a really cool place to start a company, uh, and, and stay. Um, and so, we see that as part of our key role. Uh, why the Bank Street location? Well, the Bank Street location came to our attention, actually, under some previous leadership, uh, with the city, but, um, when it first came to my attention and we were having conversations about where to locate this, we knew we wanted this to be in downtown Norfolk. I mean, we have some other things, uh, I think President Broderick has briefed many of you on some of our other efforts. We have our nursing program in Virginia Beach, we have a, a new maritime, uh, propulsion system lab going into Newport News. What we're doing with this institute, we thought Norfolk was the place. I mean, we, it just, it just seems to be, uh, where the energy and efforts are in entrepreneurship and, and economic development. Um, so why did we settle on the Bank Street location? Well, frankly, uh, it came to our attention. Uh, it was brought up by some previous leadership. We think that the, the institute on Bank Street makes a heck of a lot of sense. Um, number one, because we are not only moving this institute here, and I listed the stuff that lie underneath the institute, because many of you are familiar with these centers. We have four of these federally funded centers. Some of you know these folks, my directors of these centers are phenomenal individuals that do a huge amount of work. In fact, as we're compiling some data right now to go after a new grant opportunity, I asked for how many folks we interacted with, uh, in Norfolk, uh, last year. And between the Veterans Business Center, the Women's Business Center, the Hampton Roads Procurement Assistance Center, and Tempo, we touched nearly 800 and some entrepreneurs from the city of Norfolk last year. We've touched over, well over 1,200 throughout the whole region. Um, and so, we thought the Bank Street location was pretty geographically located, right in the center of downtown, tethered enough to what we think is going on with, uh, your vision for the Granby Tech Corridor, uh, but also a little bit closer because of our other initiative that we're proposing to put in the space, uh, the Open Seas Tech Hub. It was a little closer to the Virginia Maritime Association, uh, and, and to, uh, the, the Port Authority in, in, uh, the World Trade Center. Yeah, yeah.
That you touched last year. How many of those napkin ideas actually made sense and were viable?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, um, one of the things I'm, I'm perhaps most proud of with, with these centers, particularly our Women's Business Center, um, you know, entrepreneurship has this very lofty idea that, you know, it's the Googles and, and all these, you know, you great things. In fact, our Women's Business Center touched around 270, uh, entrepreneurs in Norfolk alone. Uh, and those are everything from Etsy stores to restaurants to, so, so we have a phenomenal track record of converting those things to actual going concerns. Now, the loftier things, the napkin, you know, this is the best invention, eh, it's a, it, it might be, we're probably more in line with national statistics on our, on our hit rate on those. Uh, but, but we, what we do is we try to wrap them in as much mentoring and services as we can provide at the front end. And I should mention, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this, with those three centers in particular, this is a wonderful example of how cities can leverage universities. Those three business centers that we offer are free of charge because they are federally funded grant programs from the Small Business Administration. So we charge no fees for females to walk into our Women's Business Center and get entrepreneurial assistance. Uh, so it really is a wonderful opportunity to open up what we're doing on campus to, to a big, broad audience. Uh, this Open Seas Tech Hub is actually a fairly new initiative. This started rolling, uh, last year after some conversations with a global maritime, uh, network, uh, innovation network. But what we're envisioning putting in the space, along with the institute, is an innovation hub that will focus in on resilience, maritime, distribution, logistics, uh, and, uh, what we're broadly calling blue tech, which is sort of the new buzzword for all the innovations related to water. Um, and the beauty of this is we're already, we literally have the MOU sitting on my desk ready to sign with three of these other hubs that exist, one in Haifa, one in Marseille, and one in London. Um, and so, once we can bring this facility online, we will have an MOU agreement with those facilities. This will allow us, then, to trade cohorts of entrepreneurs amongst the center, so everybody gets visibility in very, in different markets. So we're really excited about that. I would be remiss if I did not clarify some things about our Bush Street location, our Innovation Center. Uh, there's been some misconceptions about that going away. This is not, uh, replacing our Bush Street location. In fact, this is in addition to it. So our Bush Street Center will still continue to offer coworking space. Uh, we have a wonderful track record in that center of early-stage companies working in that center and then launching out of it. Uh, several of them, as many of you may know, Hamilton Perkins, who had, was in our center for a long period of time and has matured to a level where he needed bigger space and has left our center. So, so we are the, we are the bird's nest. We, we do kick them out at some point, uh, but we nurture them while they're there, and, and then we hope to launch them, uh, whether it be to, you know, Bobby Space at Percolator or some of these other spaces. This is where the thickening of this ecosystem is just wonderful for us, because we actually have places we can send these folks now. This is a little floor plan, I thi, I think you have this in, in your materials, of, of what we're envisioning. Uh, perhaps the most exciting piece of this is actually, this gives ODU a classroom presence in downtown Norfolk for the first time. Uh, this is something we've been as, trying to negotiate, uh, figure out how to make, how to pull this off for a number of years. Uh, I can tell you personally, our business school dean, Jeff Tanner, is very excited about this opportunity to have a 35-seat classroom, uh, in downtown Norfolk. Um, and as part of the, uh, conversations we were having, we are envisioning being able to hold workshops in here because this is right beside the Norfolk Works set, uh, section, um, uh, center. So we're envisioning being able to hold quarterly events inside our center in, in conjunction, uh, with Norfolk Works. Uh, and as with most of these spaces, you see a very large, sort of, open ideation area, uh, in the front. Uh, another view of our Bank Street location and what we're envisioning. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, Mel Price and WPA, they've been wonderful to work with, trying to help us figure out what the vision would be for this space and how to incorporate, really, when, when we first started talking about this, uh, uh, size of square footage, I thought, wow, that's a lot of space. And, and boy, it, it shrunk up pretty fast. We're putting a lot of stuff in here, but Mel's been great to work with, and I think, uh, we're able to, uh, see a great vision for, for this space. So, I, you know, it wouldn't have, this, none of this would have been possible without, uh, City Manager, uh, Doug Smith, and Mayor Alexander, and Jared, and, and Bob, um, and actually, George, uh, was involved early on, uh, when he was in that role. And, and really, we thank you all for, for the help with this. We think it's a wonderful vision. Uh, the partnership we have with you guys, obviously, goes without saying. Uh, we, we really do feel that our fortunes are tethered together. Uh, you know, this, our research university in this city, you know, the way we move forward over the next several decades, it, it, it goes hand in hand. And so, we're very happy to bring you this idea and, uh, happy to take any questions or, or thoughts you may have.
Okay. If I could, Mayor, uh, uh, Ms. Graves caught my eye when I, when you heard you say the entrepreneurship, and she looked right at me and said, St. Paul's! Um, and what, um, I, I want to be sure, I, I thank you. Chip's, uh, Dr. Fowler's done a number of things for us really recently, um, really helping us start to figure out what the opportunity zones mean and what they mean in, in, uh, St. Paul's. Uh, he's, he is as, uh, up to speed on what we're doing over there as, as anybody in academia right now. He's helping us, uh, helped us frame up the financing charrette that we had a, a week or two ago, so, uh, they're, uh, very aware and very anxious to help us with that transformation. And so, I think this is a project that, um, obviously does some wonderful things for us, and, and not the least of which is activates some important space for us as you make that connection from MacArthur on over to, um, the rest of downtown and Main Street. Dr. Fowler, thank you, appreciate it very much, and you will have a lease on your agenda on the, uh, 26th of March.
Thank you.
All right. Christine Morris is going to step back up, and, um, Chesterfield Heights, you know, we've talked a lot, um, since before I got here about Norfolk as this laboratory for resilience and, uh, uh, looking to companies and engineering firms to come in and try new ideas, and, um, uh, now we are actually in the implementation pha, phase of some really interesting ideas with the NDRC grant over in Chesterfield Heights, and I want you all to see that. Frankly, we, we stole some of the images that you saw, uh, as we were talking through, um, St. Paul's today to, for the Blue Way, Green Way. I think some of the things you're going to see of, of some of the images of green space over here are really pretty spectacular. So, Christine, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you again, and thank you for having me for, uh, this project update. Before I get started, I, I just want to thank, uh, every member of the city staff. There's nobody who hasn't touched this project and been a tremendous, uh, effort to, to get this done. You'll see the timeline is extremely aggressive, and the team that you have in this city, uh, I don't think it could have happened anywhere else. And let me just say, it's not happening anywhere else. It's not happening in New York, it's not happening in New Orleans, it's not happening in any of the other, um, uh, grantees to this. So kudos to your team, uh, for the work they did. And I do, do want to acknowledge Scott Smith, who works with me tirelessly every day on this project, uh, and also Kyle Spencer, uh, up in the office. So, we have reached a milestone. We are at final engineered drawings, and that for, uh, it's new to me, it's an 800-page book of line drawings of where stuff is going to go. So, um, this is going to be a very brief overview, I won't show you all 800, um, of those slides, but, um, it's, it's daunting. I want to start by thanking the community. This has been truly a community-driven process, and, um, it's, it's been the residents of, of both communities and all of the stakeholders over there, uh, the, the public schools, the, um, the, the academy, the NRHA, um, ODU, uh, Elizabeth River Trail, Wetlands Watch, Norfolk State University, all have been, uh, great partners with us, and, um, we have done design charrettes, we have done, uh, feedback sessions, we've done outdoor demonstrations. I mean, people have been with us all the way along. Um, I do want to highlight the Section 3 work that we're doing now. Uh, we are doing a series of meet and greets, we're about to go to bid packages, uh, so we're getting subcontractors, uh, introduced to, uh, main contractors. We have Section 3 residents being put on lists, will be informed of any, uh, hiring opportunity. We did a full-day workshop for subcontractors, uh, over at the Grandy Village Learning Center. We had about 30 people show up, um, to talk through, how do you bid a project like this? How do you get, um, uh, married up with a, a, a bigger contractor if you don't want to go in on your own? Uh, so it's been, um, we're working very hard to make sure, uh, that we can have good representation from the community on these contracts, and we are also pulling out 10, uh, contracts, it'll be less than $100,000 each, that are designed, uh, for smaller businesses to bid on. So, uh, very excited about that work. So when we started, uh, one of the things that we wanted to define for this project was really the project values, that it has to be replicable, it has to be connective, um, it has to drive economic vitality, and that, uh, it has to have ecological vitality. And I hope that you'll see in the pictures that you're about to see that we stayed true to these values. Um, and these values were divi, defined by the community, um, and, uh, and they've held us accountable to it. There's a lot going on. Uh, this has been a very tight project. We, we got the award in, uh, January 2016, but we didn't get the actual money, uh, until March, uh, of 2017. And so, we are, uh, right now in final, um, environmental impact statement, um, comment, and here it is. Uh, you can see it in our office, you can see it online, if you'd like to take a look at it. Uh, people have till the 12th to comment on it, and at that point, it becomes final, we go to the Record of Decision, and the funds for construction get released in, uh, early April, and then, uh, it's off to the races. Uh, so, construction begins, and then, uh, construction must be completed, uh, by June of 2022, because these funds, the way they were appropriated, leave us in, um, in September of 2022, and it, remember, it is a Commonwealth grant, and they need to close out, so they need three months to close out the grant. So we do not have a lot of time here, which means it's going to be very onerous on the community to do the amount of work that you're about to see that's going to happen there. So again, um, this is where the, uh, the, uh, documents can be viewed for the final, um, environmental impact statement, and, um, the comments go directly to DHCD. So, um, if you remember, uh, the idea for this project was that we believe we can reduce the risk to flooding to a community, a coastal community, in the event of a 100-year, uh, coastal storm event with a simultaneous 10-year rain event, when the water in the river is 2.5 feet higher, which is basically a 50-year, uh, trajectory for us right now. And to do that, we've got basically three ideas. We, we, um, we have to do the coastal protection, and there are, um, uh, the types of interventions that are included in the coastal protection, the stormwater management, once we've protected the coast, we've kind of created a bathtub, so we need to handle the stormwater. But we want to make sure that, um, it's not just a water project, right? This is a resilience project, so we have to connect people to their communities, to each other, to economic opportunity, um, and so, uh, that is really where the park and, uh, some of the work around getting in and out of the community comes in. So, the coastal protection. So, uh, as you go from, uh, the west to the east, uh, we are, uh, realigning the, the Kimball Terrace, uh, way in, um, and, uh, so that we can get it up to eight feet, all the way to 11 feet, to protect it from flooding. Um, we are using almost all berm to, which is basically, uh, a dirt mound with a clay core with grass on top, in order to, um, uh, get the protection on the coast to an 11-foot standard all the way along. There's only one place we're, we're using a wall, and that is on Kimball Terrace, right in front of Jim Gunn's coastal, um, area, uh, and, and that is, uh, just because it's so narrow there, right at between Haynes Creek and Ohio Creek, we couldn't do a berm. But that's the only flood wall we're doing. The other way that we're protecting the coast is we're raising, uh, the road over here at Kimball Terrace, um, uh, and, I'm sorry, at Kimball Loop, uh, around the NRHA's property. The rest of it is basically berm, um, and we're also berming up and around the, um, Ohio and Haynes Creek area in order to improve the storage capacity, uh, for those two areas to hold stormwater when we need to. So, that's how we kind of keep the water in the river. So, this is kind of hard to read, but it's really important. This shows you that not all the area is the same level, right? So we've got different levels that we've got to raise to get, uh, a, a uniform 11-foot, and that's basically what this is showing you. Some places, we have to go up as much as seven feet, other places, we only have to go up two feet to get that 11-foot polter closed. And so, this little chart, um, which it, the, um, residents have found very interesting, shows you how much dirt basically has to go in front of your house in order to get to 11 feet. And this is basically what it will look like, right? We're going to use, uh, you know, it'll be a, a gentle slope up with a, a top of about, uh, anywhere between, uh, eight feet and then, uh, around eight feet, and then it'll go, slope back down. And along the Chesterfield Boulevard area, we'll put in a living shoreline with the oyster And along the Chesterfield Boulevard area, we'll put in a living shoreline with the oyster reef, so that will reduce the chance of wave attenuation, doing erosion on our newly-constructed berm. So, now that we've got the coast taken care of, we've got to manage the water. And this is really where the innovation is coming as well. So, we are doing a lot of upsizing of pipes underground, but mostly, we're saying we've got to hold water everywhere we can. So, it starts with parcel level. We'd like everybody in this community to at least put in a rain barrel, if not a stormwater retention on their land, some sort of rain garden. And then, we're using all the green space that the city owns to hold water. We're also doing areas where, at the intersections in Chesterfield Heights, where we'll do bio swales that hold water. There'll be a large stormwater park in the park itself, and there'll be two pumps associated with this. When we first started, we had five pumps, we're down to two. That's an amazing engineering feat, and I applaud the team for getting there. And so, this-
The bio-retentions, the little green pieces, the little cells.
Yeah.
The finishing story.
Yeah, those are, those are the little cells that each, and they really do hold a tremendous amount of water. So, they're, and, you know, once they get them, you can perk it through and it cleans it. So, it gives us, John, I think John White's very happy, his TMDL load goes down. So, that's really good. And this is just sort of what some of those features look like. The stormwater park, the previous pavers we'll have on Marlboro, we have to pull up the brick there, we'll be replacing all that with previous pavers, and the bump outs show you those bio swales. This is the pump station at Ballantyne. It's at the end of Ballantyne Avenue as you go towards the river. It'll be your gateway to the fishing pier. And it's going to allow people to look in, you'll be able to see the machinery while it's running. It will have some parking spaces for the fishing pier, and it will also have charging stations. So, if the power goes out in the neighborhood, you can go down and charge your phone. It'll be solar. And we tried to make it look a little bit like a, something that you'd be inviting to walk towards as you come into the neighborhood. So, you'll pass right underneath there and out into the fishing pier. And this is the resilience park. These are some of the images that the manager mentioned. This is the overview of the park. There are basically four sections to it, a play area, a large field, wetlands walk, and then, an exercise trail system. And so, here is a better look at that. There's a neighborhood terrace that'll have gaming tables. It was something that people really wanted, chess tables, checker tables. So, they'll be up on the terrace area, two areas for wetland, so that the water, as it flows off the berm, will be captured there and perked through into the river. The great lawn area, it'll be underdrained, right now, it's very marshy in there, so we'll have a nice play area. And then, some really nice play areas up by the Chesterfield Academy. And so, here are some precedent pictures of what it'll look like. It'll be poor in play in the play areas, so it'll be really quite a beautiful space for families to gather and to enjoy the open space. But it'll also give them an understanding of what's happening there. We'll have a trail that explains all of the water management that's going on there. So, there'll be signs, educational signs, that people can understand what's happening. And there is the fishing pier at Ballantyne, and that is, goes out far enough so that you can get into the actual fishable waters. And the neighborhood was very excited about that. Every time I, that's the first thing they ask about, when's the pier coming? So, there it is. So, that's the Ohio Creek project. Thank you so much for your interest, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Courtney.
Christine, thank you for your tireless work. I know you thanked everybody in advance, but thank you, because you've been a strong leader on this initiative. And I do want to thank the team Norfolk and everybody's work together, because I know the time constraint is quite considerable. So, when will we see literally the first thing coming out as it relates to the coastal side of the work?
So, we think that we'll be digging, well, right now, public utilities, utilities work is going to actually do water and sewer replacement in here, and they have started that so that they can get out of our way as we start to put in the stormwater sewer, or the stormwater. You'll probably see, we'll probably do a groundbreaking with the state sometime in June. We're looking at that now, asking them when they'd like to come down. And you'll probably see people start digging in August.
Okay. Andrea.
Thank you for all of your hard work on this and other projects. I just want to make sure that we stay in constant communication with the neighborhood. It's a lot going on in the neighborhood in a very compacted period of time, which is good and bad. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, we stay in touch with them, whether it's every other month, somebody is at their civic league answering questions, or sending an email update to the civic league president to be able to forward out, using Neighbor Next Door, or whatever, that we're getting information out and that we have the ability to be able to communicate on a regular basis. So, while it's impactful to them, they still, you may not like what's going on, but at least you know what's going on, if that makes sense.
Understood. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Andrea.
Do you think, Christine, the economic impact to the neighborhood, do you think that this will have a potential positive effect to flood insurance rates? What do you, how this-
So, we've been, we've been reticent to say that because FEMA, HUD, the Army Corps, they're all sort of operating on different sort of levels, right? Right now, the 11-foot polter protection is in line with FEMA, that it would be a very high level of protection for that community, and one would expect that they would see their rates go down. Having said that, FEMA is thinking very hard about the NFIP program, and they may make changes in between now and three years from now that may alter that. So, if all stays the same, I would expect that, but I would not want to promise that. And we have never said that this was a project that was designed to lower flood insurance rates. It is to reduce risk to a certain level of storm. That level of storm is the storm of record for FEMA, the 100-year storm event. That is a long way of saying, I'm not committing to that.
It's reasonable, you know?
Yeah.
People need to understand what expectations are. The answer is, we're not sure. Hopefully, yes.
Right. What, so, when the floodplain maps come out, and if FEMA changes that at all, what, so, it's a very complex question that seems easy, but it's not.
Well, at least, though, we could get, I know there was some rating system at one point where we could get points for the overall flood maps that help to lower overall flood insurance based on some other things. So, this is possible, that that might help us in that.
So, I'm going to let George speak to that. That's the community rating system, and he's got a project underway right now that's looking at getting us extra points, is that correct?
Sister project.
Right. Yeah. No, you're welcome.
Okay. And Christine, be prepared for VML's conference in 2020. We've talked about this being a field trip to bring people to, and talked about resiliency efforts and how you brought community into it. So, construction will be on its way, and the VML folks love field trips. So, those are always popular. And we wanted to, I think the theme of that conference is going to be resiliency, resilient city. And so, this would be perfect to bring people in the sea, showcase the work that was done with this.
Wonderful. That's great. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much.
Christine, thank you. You all get this, but it's, she just showed you a lot of years of work and a very complicated, very expensive project that I think when we're done, you're going to be really proud of. And Christine likes to say, the good news is, the good news is, we're going to get in there and work, do a lot in a little bit of time. The bad news is, we're going to get in there and do a lot in a little bit of time, right? And so, we're going to, it is going to be tough on this neighborhood, but when it's done, I think they're going to have something really special.
One last thing, and with regard to subcontractors, because sometimes, we've had this conversation about subcontractors when we're talking about repaving roads and the work that they do. We also want to make sure that those subcontractors, or contractors, or whoever they are, are doing what they are supposed to do, and their finished product is acceptable before we hand them a check.
Yes, and-
Inspections and things of that nature, to make sure that, you know, they've done what they're supposed to do, and we're not dealing with stuff down the road, and we've already paid them, and-
Absolutely. Well, I thought you were going, the mayor and I had took a trip through Berkeley right before Thanksgiving, and what we saw was where subcontractors had frankly, you know, packed up for the holiday weekend and not left things in good condition. And Christine, I've had this conversation with the folks there, that we want to make sure that while we are going to be disruptive, we do make, these contractors do leave things in reasonable condition when they go off for the weekend or go off for holidays. We've learned that lesson. Great. George, so, this is actually your first Tuesday meeting, and I think it's NLC, I think some of you all are heading off to NLC in a couple, which caused us to move your business meeting to tonight, but we want to stay on the track of sharing with you, call them hot topics that are coming your way from a planning perspective. And so, George is going to jump up and do that. George Holmwood, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to try to be a lot briefer this time than I was the last time, and so, I want to really quickly run through a couple of things. Mr. Smiggle, Christine has already agreed to a mobile workshop from the American Planning Association Virginia Chapter Conference in Hampton in July that'll be coming to tour through the area. So, you know, this is clearly something we all want to show off, because it really is great stuff. So, I want to run just quickly through some things to let you know what's going on and what's going to be coming to you at some point in time in the future. So, the first item is, you remember, we put into the new zoning ordinance, this thing called a neighborhood resilience overlay, which allows neighborhoods to, on a case-by-case basis, work with staff and come up with specific form standards that work for their particular neighborhood. Well, the first one of those since the adoption of the new ordinance is in process, and that is in Colonial Place, Riverview. And we've had three community meetings, and basically, worked on a set of standards that the community is very happy with implementing as form standards that would apply to those two neighborhoods, as well as also to Cruiser Place. And we're very close to initiating this at the planning commission level, which would then ultimately bring a text amendment to you all. One of the things that we're working carefully with the city attorney on is how to have, while ordinance language says thou shall, we're trying to make sure that there's some parts in there that are very clear that you should, and that it's not an absolute requirement in some cases, because people do have better ideas. And we want to make sure that we don't force everybody into the middle when sometimes the architectural variety and richness of a community is actually enhanced by having some sort of differences in architecture. So, we're working on that. This is probably something you're going to see in the May timeframe going forward. There is an application that is into the planning commission right now for a trucking terminal on East 20th Street. It is one of the ones that is coming to you because it is an industrial use within 600 feet of residential, excuse me, and there's a lot of residential there. So, this is one where staff is almost certainly going to recommend denial, because we don't believe that a trucking terminal, whose sole business is to run trucks in and out, and there's no other economic benefit to the city, thank you, we just don't believe that's the sort of thing that should be right next to residential. So, you may hear about this from people who aren't real thrilled with the staff's recommendation, but that's what that's about. We're continuing the, we're continuing the conversation we're having with the restaurants, both downtown and throughout the city, on how we can be a lot more friendly, business-friendly to them. Part of it is, there's some misunderstanding of what the rules now are. As you know, with the new zoning ordinance, we did a lot of things to try to reduce the number of times that a restaurant has to come visit the planning commission and city council to get approval for things. And some people think that, don't understand that some of the rules have changed. Partly, it's because we wrote it in ordinance form, which, you know, it takes lawyers and planners to actually understand what it means. So, we may bring a few little tweaks back to you to make it really clear that, you know, we really are trying to let, to get out of the way of people running businesses and being entrepreneurial in our city. Temporary certificate of occupancy fees, this is something we're going to bring to you. We're going to propose a reduction in those fees initially, and then, scale them up to the higher number. Currently, we charge $600 for a temporary certificate of occupancy, and that is for a one-month period, and the next month is 600. We're going to bring to you a proposal to change the first month to 100, the second month to 200, the third month to 400, and the fourth month and every month thereafter to 600. The point is that we want people to actually finish their buildings before occupying them. But there are times when it makes sense to allow a temporary certificate of occupancy because there's something that's not directly related to life safety that is still outstanding, such as landscaping, or having the grass fully germinated, and things like that. So, we're going to bring that to you, probably as part of the budget process, just so you know that we are working on that. And that has come from some conversations that we've had with some of y'all. Christine's already covered the Ohio Creek Plan. It's in for site plan review, and we're all pretty excited about. Some other things are coming. We just finished the dune delineation behind Greenies. Some of you who know the site are scratching your heads and saying, "Dune? What dune?" Well, it's where the dune should have been and would have been had natural forces allowed it to be there. But what that does is that helps us next Monday night, when we're out at Pretlow, talking to the community at Mr. Smiggle's request, about how that site can be used, because that kind of draws the line on the water side as to how far out, you know, any kind of development can occur. At your table today, or at your place, we have a new brochure on grass stabilization. Many of you have talked to me about it. This is one of those issues that you all hear frequently from developers. They don't quite understand what the rules are, so we've tried to make it clear and help them out as part of the things that we do. You all will hear really soon about this JLU study that we have recently completed with City of Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, or recent, we're about in the process of getting completed. We're trying to get it finalized. Y'all will hear a lot about that, but I want to put it on your radar because it does talk about a proposal to potentially raise the center line of Hampton Boulevard. The process, that, doing that might cause, not might, probably, almost certainly will cause the loss of a travel lane in each direction. I know this is a conversation y'all have had in another context, so I just wanted to warn you, so that you take your deep breaths and, you know, know that it's coming.
Just to be clear, so that is a joint land use study, that the Navy, City of Virginia Beach, City of Norfolk, been going on for months, recommendations are going to come out. It's as much about sort of how we're dealing with some of the sea level rise conditions jointly, really for the first time. The Navy's been doing their planning. Historically, we've been doing our planning, and so, now, we're saying, let's, let's look at these things together. And so, obviously, one of the places that they have identified is flooding on Hampton Boulevard at the base of the bridge. And obviously, if the Navy's trying to get to the base to mobilize, they need to be able to get to the base to mobilize. And so, you'll see some conversation about Hampton Boulevard and about Shore Drive toward Little Creek, and ultimately, to an important story.
Just a quick question on the JLU's. What's the timing of all that?
We believe that you will be ready for a presentation, y'all, at the end of the month.
But then, in terms of the execution, implementation, funding, et cetera?
Well, I mean, it's sort of almost like what Colonel Kinsman was talking about. You know, there is, you get the plan, you get it approved, and then, you have to chase dollars. The good news is that as of this fiscal year, there is now money that has been appropriated through the Defense Department that allows for projects that benefit the base to occur outside the fence. And that's kind of a very new thing and a first. So, there is an opportunity, but the amount of money that's involved, to borrow Mr. Patrick's term, I believe, is called decimal dust, but it's still, I mean, there's still some opportunity.
But please do know, we obviously went through this exercise with the Hampton Boulevard Traffic Task Force, where there was considerable community pushback of not reducing, of, yeah, of not reducing the lanes from three to two. I'm just saying that out loud.
Ms. Doyle, absolutely, and that's why I'm telling y'all that I don't want, I don't want y'all to be surprised. The, y'all approved the Census Complete Count Committee at your last meeting, and we're encouraging you all to finish the appointments up this month, so it can be stood up by the 1st of April, which is, you know, Census Day minus one year. 1st of April, which is, you know, Census Day minus one year, and to help us move forward. As Morgan mentioned at your last meeting, unfortunately, the funding from the state got removed from the budget. So, you know, this really is a process that we're going to have to be, take a lot of ownership and be responsible for. We have a whole bunch of community meetings coming up. I've already mentioned the Greenies Site Discussion, Commercial Pattern Book. Y'all have heard us talking about the various pattern books that we are working on to try to help illustrate essentially the new zoning ordinance and make it easier. We are meeting with the various development-related interests, if you will, and organizations, so HR Acre, Hurrah, TBA, ULI, various of our local firms that do commercial and multifamily development, to try to work with them to figure out how we can make this, the draft document, easier for them to understand and use. It's probably, I think we're probably going to end up dividing it into three pieces, one for each of the character districts outside of downtown, so that it's easier to understand, because right now it's a little voluminous. And to me, it works well, but that's not to, for, to everybody's taste. So, Stewart School, we're going to meet with the communities in Park Place and Colonial Place to talk about the opportunities for reuse of that. And then, that will inform going back out with an RFP to solicit people to come and potentially-
So, if you remember, we've had, one of the things we've talked about, it's been a little while, was the new zoning ordinance and the impact of that ordinance on the building and the ability to put residential in that building. So, one of the things we've gone back to the community, at Ms. Doyle's behalf, to call them specifically present, and said, "Listen, we've got dynamics around this building have changed in terms of developability, so we want to come to the community, have some conversation, explain to you what we think that means before we move forward."
There was a group that wanted to put a school there. Are they still around? Or does this preclude them? The new ordinance precludes that?
No, sir. That would be on the table, as is the, y'all remember, the original proposal was for a senior living facility. That would, that certainly, all of those things are absolutely possible under the new ordinance. And the limitation is that the building is in the floodplain. So, whatever is done has to be sensitive to the fact that the building's in the floodplain, and quite frankly, the front of that property floods with some degree of regularity. So, that's the, that's sort of the limiting factor. Christine mentioned, we are moving forward as rapidly as possible with trying to improve the city's community rating system rating for flood insurance. And the CRS rating, what it does is it provides an across-the-board reduction by percentage for everybody's flood insurance premiums in the city. We're currently sitting at a 15% reduction, and we're hoping by the end of this year, certainly by May of next year at the absolute latest, to be at a 25% reduction in flood premiums. Part of what we need to do, and we get a lot of points for, and it's one of those things that we get points for it, but it also multiplies points we get in other categories, is what's called this program of public information. FEMA is really, really big on the idea that people who know and understand their risk will make smart choices. And so, part of what we're trying to do is help people understand even better than we already are. And so, we're going to be bringing to y'all a briefing and a recommendation either next month or in May, depending on how it works with your budget schedule, on how to move forward with a program of public information related to flood insurance premiums and reducing them. We're going to have a tax credit, tax abatement workshop in May at the Jordan Newby Library to engage people. And this is how individuals, individual homeowners, individual property owners can use tax abatement and historic tax credits, and they don't need to hire a whole bunch of professionals to guide them through the process. Most of it can be done fairly simply by themselves, and so, we wanted to help them do that. Yes, ma'am.
Is, will that be the only meeting available to the community on May 8?
It's the only one we currently have scheduled, but if the room is full and we have lots of demand, we'll try to schedule more.
And when will it take place?
It's at Jordan Newby, 6 to 8, I believe, is the, yeah, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. You're soon going to get the Planning Commission's annual report. I thought that we'd already gotten it sent to you, but we didn't. As you know, it summarizes all of the activities of the Planning Commission, but also the Planning Department, and for the year, so that will get to you, will come to you in your Dropbox fairly soon. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. The, this year, we, the number of applications reviewed by the Planning Commission was virtually the same as the 10-year average of those. But there was a very distinct difference in what the applications were for. And we believe that that is a result of the new zoning ordinance, and it's a, I think it's a good story. It's a positive story. And so, next month, Jeremy Sharp will be here. He's our new zoning administrator. He'll be here to tell you about, one year on, the new zoning ordinance and how it's impacted, and this is one of the things that will be, will be highlighted. Architecture Review Board, also a very typical year, and we are, again, because of the new ordinance, there are things that are going to the Architecture Review Board that didn't in the past, but conversely, there's things now that go through the form standard process that don't have to go to the ARB. So, a difference in what's going, but about the same number. And that's all. I'll be answered. Any questions?
Andrea to Mr. Riddick.
A quick question related to historic properties, knowing that we've got a lot here, but we've not done an inventory of our historic properties for 20 or 30 years. My understanding, that's going to be undertaken here in the next year or so. Could you talk about what that looks like, when that will happen?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to do a complete historic resources inventory, a standing architecture, not trying to get into archaeology, in the city, probably over a three-to-four-year period. And that way, we can get it done in a way that doesn't break the bank in any one given year. And the way that works is, we'll hire, we won't hire anybody, the state will hire. So, essentially, we kind of pay for it, but the, it's, the program is run by the State Department Historic Resources. They will hire a consultant, and they basically first look at neighborhoods, and if the neighborhood has some possibility of having historic resources, then they'll drill down and look at individual buildings. But if the neighborhood is, you know, was essentially developed in the 1980s or 1990s, then it's just completely skipped. So, it's, while it is looking at the entire city, there is some triage that goes into deciding how, you know, how detailed to look at individual properties.
Just to, I mean, the reason why this is important for the City of Norfolk is because it's a real economic development tool, something that will have historic property, and either individual homeowners or developers can utilize historic tax credits. We are improving properties, and more people are coming into the community. So, because we haven't had one for so long, we've lost out on some of that, so I'm really excited, I think, to more the paper itself and improve the community's improvements. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the Railroad District is a great example of success in that. You know, that was a cooperative venture between the city and the community, and it's resulted, and I think Eson was telling me, it's now, we're up to about $17 for each dollar invested in return. So, it's been a great benefit to us in that regard.
Hey, Mr. Riddick.
Yeah, George, a couple of things. You mentioned trucks over on 20th Street.
East 20th, yes, sir.
You know, I think a couple of years ago, there was an effort to try to bring some trucks down Red Gate Avenue, maybe 100 trucks in an hour, just to make sure that you stay on top of this one and flag it, because we can't stand another piece of traffic on Church Street. And that would be probably a way for those trucks to happen, so make sure you stay on top of this and flag it so we can see it. Secondly, you said something about lawyers and planners language. What did you mean by that?
Well, you know, we write ordinances. We don't write it in plain English. We write it in a language that is, tries to be very specific about what is and is not allowed or not allowed. And so, sometimes that language ends up sounding more like Shakespeare than the English we would normally be reading. And that's what I mean by that.
So, my point is, when you write these, make sure that the average person can understand it, you know? Like Denzel Washington, like it's a three-heel, like you're talking a three-heel.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. So, a couple of things. I would ask, that's the second time we've done this with George. Remember, the intent was to give you a briefing of just exactly what Mr. Riddick said. Hey, let us, let us know when something's coming our way that you think should be, we should be sensitive to. So, I'm going to look to you all for some feedback in the coming months of, are you getting what you want out of these quick briefings? Do you want, are you getting too much detail? Are you getting not enough detail? So, don't need that tonight, but we'll just ask for that feedback offline.
Mr. Vaniter, if you don't mind, I really want to stay on top of that joint land use work, because again, we promised the community we would not reduce the lanes 32.
And so, this is, yes. Now, let me, I'll talk about that a little bit more, but a couple of things. One, there's a document, and this is what we do, and then here's an item we're grabbing out of it, right? So, it is, you are going to have some solutions that you are going to have to bring to your roads in the coming decades, all right? And that's what this looks at. So, what you're going to see is different alternatives for different places for different time periods. So, one of them is, you lift the road a little bit, and you don't make, you don't make many changes, but that will satisfy you for a period of time. Others are going to say, "Do something more dramatic," and that will satisfy you for a longer period of time. So, I, so I hear you. It's why we brought it up. But I would say to you, and we talked about this at the retreat, if we're going to be serious about bringing in solutions dealing with flooding and sea level rise, some of them are going to be uncomfortable, right? That's just in the coming years. And so, it's coming your way. But I hear what you're saying. It's why we brought it up, and we'll make sure that you and the community are well briefed.
All right, Mr. Bull.
I'm going to have the members of the council assemble informally in closed meeting on March 5, 2019, at 5:23 in the 10th floor conference room of the City Hall Building, the City of Norfolk, for the purposes which are set out in the clauses 29 and 3 of Section 8, Section 2.2-3711, the Virginia Freedom of Liberty Information Act, 29, discussion of a contract involving the expenditure of public funds in the Ocean View area, and Clause 3, discussion for real estate item in the Broad Creek area. Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Alexander.
Aye.